Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for the students and staff at Manchester Park, home of the Timberwolves.
At Manchester Park, learning rocks on the playground of knowledge and opportunity.
As members of our Mathlings Club, we thank our parents and teachers and school board for all we do.
Go Timberwolves!
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the ALATHA Board of Education. Mrs. Carpenter, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ashley.
Here.
Mr. Churchman.
Here.
Dr. Drummond.
Here.
Mr. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Poland.
Mrs. Wilhelm.
And we have a quorum to conduct our business tonight.
Dr. All, would you please introduce our guests for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, if I could have our two students come forward. We have Rebecca Cromer and Hannah Kalenbach, both ninth graders at Chisholm Trail, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, then I'll tell you a little bit about them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And, girls, if you come over here, let's say, Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, Rebecca, a little bit about Rebecca. She is on drill team, she's in the choir, she's president of the drama club, she's a thespian, and she takes dance and voice lessons. And so I think she probably was selected because she represents students that are engaged in a lot of activities. And Rebecca, do you have a parent here?
Yes, my mom, Vicki Cromer.
I'll have you girls switch here. Bring Hannah up here. Hannah is an officer on the drill team, she's also in choir, she's vice president of the drama club, former president of the drama club, she's also a thespian. I can see these are our future actors and actresses. She takes dance lessons and voice lessons, so I've assumed that you like the arts and all the things that go along with that. And would you introduce someone here for us?
My principal, Mr. Bill Weber.
So I thank both of you for being here tonight and helping us start our meeting. We appreciate it, and it's nice to get to know you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca and Hannah, and thank you, Mr. Weber. Glad to have you here tonight. With that, Dr. All, we'll turn our attention to an overview of the meeting, please.
And we're going to begin the meeting tonight, starting out with some presentations. The first one's going to be on the ALATHA Benchmarking Conference, and we just had our first visit of school districts in other states that we try to benchmark in order to become better and have our continuous improvement at a high level, so you'll hear more about that. We're also going to introduce a concept of leadership development or succession planning in the district to develop our leadership team, a new innovative program in human resources called Grow Our Own, which will allow us, hopefully, to have some incentives for our own graduates to go into education and come back and teach here, and then a new introduction of an after-school experience, elementary science clubs that we're very proud to introduce to the board. We will also then have recognitions and awards tonight, and then the board president will identify those at that time. At about 7:00, we will entertain public comments. Following public comments, the board will address action items, first, the consent agenda, and these are matters that the board may approve without detailed discussion, and they may remove one or more items for separate discussion and vote. They receive supporting information on this ahead of time. Following the consent agenda items, the board will address action on a variety of bids, contracts, and agreements which will be identified by item. And also, the board will set some special meeting dates and times tonight for future board meetings. Following that, the board has a series of future action items from the location of our next junior high, once that's determined, to a proposal on a school calendar. We would hope to adopt a school calendar by December so that our public would have an opportunity to know the schedule early, and a variety of other topics. And then there are additional written reports that the board has from staff. Following the meeting, there will be an executive session, and we will recess to executive session to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. All. As we transition to item 2.01, the ALATHA Benchmarking Conference, let me clarify, can everyone hear us in the back of the room? The sound seems different to me tonight for some reason. Can you all hear back there?
Not as well.
Not as well. If our technical people could help us with that, we'd appreciate it.
This is just a brief presentation to give a little follow-up for a great experience we had last week. ALATHA School District hosted a Benchmarking Conference that involved school districts in a variety of states. Francis Howell from Missouri in St. Louis area, Williamson in Tennessee outside of Nashville, Millard School District in Nebraska, Edmunds School District in Oklahoma were among those present with us to begin to develop a shared best practices and to begin to get to know each other so that we can have a deeper understanding of how to improve our school districts. All these school districts are considered high-performing school districts, and our effort is to take ALATHA to an even better place as far as our education is concerned. We use the data from these districts to help compare ourselves in areas where we may be above state-national averages, but that might not be good enough for us, and that we want to be even higher than that. I'm going to have Dr. George just tell you a little bit about what the follow-up from this conference might be and some potential opportunities for ALATHA, and I want to compliment him and his assistant Peggy Rowlauter on organizing this, and it was an excellent experience, and we had very positive feedback from the other school districts about our school district and the opportunity to share best practices.
Thank you. We went into the conference with several objectives, and one of those was to build trust, and I think we moved in that direction and made some progress. We wanted to share best practices, and that went well, and we had some excellent presentations, and Dr. Shirk and Dr. Graham, or Dr. Shirk and Dr. Sanders presented on our 21st Century Schools, and that went very well. We also wanted to address some business items, and it became very clear in the discussion that the group wanted to have, as we thought about other districts that might join the group, districts that would help drive all of us to higher levels of excellence and not only share data, but share how we got there, how we accomplished those high levels of performance and how we're able to sustain that. There was interest also in looking at the data gathering piece, and we're refining that, and Dr. Banakowski and Dr. Graham and a person from the Millard School District are working on that piece. We also wanted to look at our employee climate survey and see if there might be some ways that we could share questions there, so we would have another piece to benchmark with other school districts, and then we toured some facilities. By way of follow-up, we have sent evaluation forms to the attending districts, and several of those have already come back. We've requested a letter of commitment from the other districts, all of the districts, those that were in attendance, and those should be coming in around the 1st of December. We've sent notes of the conference out, and we have a working group, as I said, that's addressing the data gathering piece. We've sent a letter to the superintendents of the non-attending districts, asking them to also make a commitment by December 1st. And then we've conducted an after-action review here internally in the district about what went well and what maybe we could improve on at a future conferences. And finally, I want to thank everyone who was able to attend and participate. We had a number of staff in at various points during the day, and some of the board members were able to attend, and we certainly appreciate that. So unless there are questions, that'll take care of that item, I guess.
Any questions or comments?
When's the next planned...
When's the next planned meeting of the participating school districts?
There was talk about having multiple meetings throughout the year, but there could be a meeting of some of the superintendents at one of the national meetings. There'll probably be a conference call in December, and then there was talk about having another conference probably next fall, and we're looking at, we've got to figure out which week in October may work best for people. There was also some talk at one of the business sessions about perhaps there might be a way to involve some of our building-level people, some principals, and that may involve a different time of year. And so there's a lot of pieces to this, and we're trying to start small but think big, and we want to move forward with this, but it's going to take a little time to get all the pieces in place. But we'd like to continue to have another meeting, another meeting similar to what we had last week, again, next fall.
Did we, as part of our participation in the conference, did we see any ahahs? Something that we thought would be of benefit to us immediately based upon where we're at?
I think different people saw different things that were either aha, or they were reinforcements of what we're doing. And it would become, in part, it was, I see they're doing the same thing we're doing, so it kind of reaffirmed what we're doing. In other cases, it may have been, now that's a good way to take care of that, I hadn't thought of that, that kind of thing. So, and, so that's the way I would, I think, try to answer that question. Different people saw different things. I think we, we had, there was an excellent presentation on the advanced placement piece. The online curriculum piece was extremely interesting, and I think we picked up some things there. We may not do it the same way, but we picked up some interesting things there, and we were able to see how another district's approaching that. So I think there were some really good things that come out of it, and I think the other districts enjoyed the opportunity to see what we're doing and look at the 21st Century Schools and look at the media that we provided for them, and I think that was helpful for them, too.
Do we plan on having a visit to any of the participating schools that were here to further refine or understand an aha or something that we thought must be of interest?
I think there is some thought about visiting some of the schools and following up on some particular information, but I don't know that those arrangements are solid yet, and I haven't spoken with everybody about that, but I think there's some interest in following up on some pieces. I don't know if specific dates have been identified yet, but to look at some additional things.
Gary, I might also add, one of the presentations from Millard was their longstanding strategic planning process for their school district that the superintendent presented, and how everything is aligned all the way down in the organization around that strategic plan. So that was one of those pieces, you know, that we're working on. They don't use the balanced scorecard approach. We've got the data piece and some of those strategic planning pieces in place, but they've had this long history of this process that's pretty dynamic. And so that was information from my point of view of a responsibility that I have in working with the Board of Education that I can continue, and Keith and I will continue to work to find out what they're doing in that area. We wouldn't adopt exactly what they're doing because it developed over time, but the alignment that he had there, I was so impressed with. So that was one of those ahahs. The online curriculum, where teachers in Tennessee in that school district can get access to the curriculum online by category, a very sophisticated project. We're working on some of that right now, and so that was incentive to show us that that's doable, and we saw more finished product than where we are, but we were on the right track. It was those kinds of things. It was very motivating. It was one, it was a tough week last week with the board meeting and getting ready for a board meeting and all the other things we were doing, but in the end, that day and a half was well worth it for positioning ourselves to continue to improve as a school district.
I think probably our district needs to be complimented for taking that leadership role, too, in bringing these districts on board, and I know how you outlined what the expectations were, what the guidelines were for even establishing in a consortium. You also gave reference to the Western Consortium, which is interesting if you go online to look at. Blue Valley, I know, belongs to that consortium, and so just ALATHA taking the leadership role and getting this kind of initiative started. I would be interested in hearing in December, if it works for everyone's schedule, or even in January, the evaluation forms that are sent back and just a little bit more information.
We can make those available, that's not an issue at all. We'd be happy to share those.
And maybe keep us updated on. I just have a feeling that there'll be more connections than just coming back next October. Just, I think, didn't some of the principals have the opportunity to meet with some of the people also?
Yes, several of our high school principals were able to meet with two academic assistant high school principals from Edmund, Oklahoma, who were in attendance, and that was a rich exchange of information and question-answer back and forth for them. And then other people, I think, were also interested in maybe having some building people involved, and so I think there may be some possibilities down the road. We may not be able to do that always in the fall, but we may be able to work out something where there might be a group of building administrators who would get together at some other time of the year when students are not in buildings.
One more comment. I had one aha when I was visiting with the folks from Edmund, and that's their freshman academies. And based on where we're at right now and all the things that we're talking about, I think that would be something that would be really important for us to understand and to take a look at and see if that has merit and if it really seemed to be a very positive program, and I would be interested in understanding and learning more about that.
I don't want to speak for others, but I think there's some people looking into that and following up on that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. George. I believe you're also going to be introducing our next agenda item, 2.02 Succession Planning Initiative.
Okay. This particular item is one that we've been working on for a while, and it's the issue of succession planning, and we've titled this Advanced Leadership Program for Succession Planning. When we begin to look at this issue, the first place we started was with our decision-making process, which begins with identifying the issue, what is the issue, and then you move to the research piece, and we did those things, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. We also wanted to see how this tied into our staff-guiding principles. And obviously, the issue of quality staff, one of our strategic goal areas, and the issue of teamwork, excellence, and quality are all tied together. When you look at the staff-guiding principles, the teamwork, the excellence and quality come through, and then in the strategic planning piece, the quality staff, develop and retain highly existing or existing highly qualified staff is where we were headed with this. Now, some of the issues that we, when we began to get into this are that we have, and we're not particularly unique, but many organizations across our country have many baby boomers who will soon be eligible to retire. And a number of our key leaders in districts will be eligible to retire in our own district or maybe already are eligible. And there's going to be a tremendous need for highly effective people to be prepared for these key leadership roles in the next five to 10 years. The approach that we took was to, obviously, read the literature, and then we met with some key people, and there were some people from H&R Block that I had encountered at a Baldridge Conference. There were people from Chesterfield County, Virginia, which is a, they were at the Baldridge Conference, and they're moving in this direction. And then we had some conversations with some people at Sprint and Nextel. We also had conversations with people at St. Luke's, and you can see the list there, UMB. And then we went through the Baldridge applications to see if other organizations had addressed this, and if so, to what extent they had addressed it, and to get more insight into this. And that led us to some insights, and we began to look at, well, where are we now in our own district? We have a Leadership Academy. The Leadership Academy is a group of, it's set up for both classified and certified licensed staff to get an orientation to leadership, and it begins in the fall, usually October, and carries through March, and we'll have maybe 40 to 50 or so people in that group, and that, they do some, hear some presentations, do some reading, and have some activities that they can work through. Then there's an administrative development series that focuses primarily on helping develop people for building-level leadership responsibilities. And it is, focuses intensely or intensively on those leadership skills that are maybe needed at the building level, does involve some shadowing of building leaders, et cetera. And then we have book studies and administrative training, our summer conference, COVI training, other things that we've done currently and over the years to help our administrators grow. The one thing that we did not have, and that is that we have not had a systematic process in place to manage the succession of mid-level leaders to those senior leadership positions. And so that's what this particular process is begin to take a look at. And other organizations are moving in the same direction. According to a Society of Human Resource Management report, 58% of those organizations that were surveyed have a formal or informal succession management program in place, and 26% plan to implement one in the near future. So this is certainly something that is taking place in many organizations across our country. Succession planning is relatively new in many organizations, but it's being driven by demographics. It's the increasing competition that we see across the world. It's also driven by an understanding of the critical role that leaders play in helping organizations to be highly successful. Two other events were key, I think, in helping organizations to look at this issue. One was the crash of Ron Brown's plane in the Balkans. Ron Brown was the Secretary of Commerce several years ago under President Clinton, and his plane went down in the Balkans, and that was a tragic situation. It also included on that plane were a number of CEOs or executive vice presidents and other high-ranking officials of a number of US corporations, and suddenly, a lot of people found that they were facing the issue of how do we suddenly replace our leader? And then the attacks on the World Trade Center, which were devastating to some organizations and taking out a whole group of leaders, and the companies had to pick up the pieces and move forward in terms of trying to figure out who's going to lead and how do they move The things that we've learned is that in the literature, succession planning and management, succession planning has moved to succession planning and management and talent development. The leading programs have moved beyond just succession planning, and they include the talent management. The leading programs emphasize the role of the senior leaders, including the CEO or the superintendent or the president or whatever the leading people are in the organization, and it's seen as an organization-wide effort, and it's not just a human resource function, but it's something that all of the leadership has to be involved in. The research suggests that all leaders and managers need to participate, and that the leading programs identify candidates and provide carefully crafted, on-the-job developmental experiences for those individuals to help them grow. The McKinsey research that was done, and they had over 11,000 responses from a number of corporations across the country, helped set the stage for where a lot of this training is going, and it identified what was, the different kinds of things that people were doing and what was considered to be more effective or less effective. And so this has an impact on what a number of companies are doing now and a number of organizations. And a couple of examples here, H&R Block has done a pilot with action learning, and they're, they had a number of teams who worked throughout 2006, a couple of teams, and they worked on business issues, and many of their recommendations are either being implemented or being seriously considered. And Sprint and Nextel also uses this, at least, it's one of their approaches to try to begin to address the issue of moving people further up into management, and that is to identify problems or issues that may become significant in the next year or two, and then identify an action-learning process and have people work on those issues to try to help the organization. In one case, the teams and the coaches met over several months, and this is the case in which H&R Block had, and they had their recommendations, and then there was a presentation to the CEO, and those have, some of those projects are moving forward. We also contacted UMB, and they indicated that they use action learning. They also have the rotational experiences where somebody may spend three or four months in a particular position and then move to a different location and spend another three or four months and begin to get experience in that way. They also have the workshops and the classroom training and mentoring and executive coaching as part of their program. Chief Executive Magazine says, "We need to identify, diagnose, prescribe, and monitor." The components of the key programs are selection based on a rigorous process, the use of a 360-degree feedback process, action learning for organizational issues, leadership development sessions, team coaches, executive sponsors, mentors, regular team meetings tied, and then the organizational goals. There is a continuous identification process, and it's cyclical, and you keep moving forward. There's a focus on leadership competencies, individual plans, and an effort to ensure the involvement of senior leadership, a values and ethical component, and a focus on the big picture rather than a particular narrow job assignment. Things to think about are, who is eligible to retire? Where in the organization do we not have immediate backfills? Once identified, how do we determine his or her needs, and the 360-degree assessment can help with that, and what key competency should be developed? Then there's, when we begin to look at our process, we identified candidates. We have to outline responsibilities, and there's time commitments, the action-learning report to senior leaders, other leadership development activities, sharing information with the coaches and the mentors, develop IDPs, and then no promises or guarantees. Participation in the program is not necessarily an automatic ticket to a different position in the district. There will be meetings of the group, and they may have some guest presentations or roundtables and meetings with the superintendent. We will be moving forward with the 360, and they'll have an action-learning project that they'll work on over about a six-to-eight week period. At the end of the cycle, we'll evaluate the program, we'll make adjustments, select another group, and provide additional opportunities for program graduates. And many organizations are using action learning, and there's a number of reasons for that. It involves setting up teams of leaders who are all on the same or similar leadership level, assigning them highly challenging tasks related to their organization, and then these stretch assignments demand that participants develop new skills, time applications, values in order to complete the assignment successfully. Real peoples resolving and taking action on real problems in real time and learning while doing so, and there's another definition there also. Key components, sponsors, strategic alignment, learning process, selection, learning teams, coaching, orientation to the issue, data gathering, then a presentation, and then the reflection or the debriefing at the end of the project. Communities like a ship, everyone ought to be prepared to take the helm if necessary. Okay, questions?
Board member questions or comments?
I believe Dr. All might have a few comments.
Dr. George, if you'll just hang on.
I would just like to indicate that, again, this has taken some behind-the-scenes research in preparation to launch. The first group of volunteers that are going through this process are pioneers, and we have a lot to learn, so we're stepping forward into this, but we may be modifying and adjusting as we go along and learn from the process to see what are the elements that Gary described tonight are really the elements that are going to have the most impact for the ALATHA School District. That's what we don't fully understand or know at this time, but I think we have to take a step forward in this direction to address it. It complements some of the other levels of staff development that we have for entry-level leadership and leadership development, and so it's sort of that missing piece that we haven't had for people in more advanced career stages. This would be a benefit to anyone participating because it should help them in their current position. It helps prepare them for possible other positions without a guarantee. It may be part of their career planning process as well as our organizational goals. So I hope we can bring back additional information on this as it's going forward. It may look a little differently a year from now, but we're starting now to move forward on this because time is important here, and it's not the only step that we're taking in... in terms of preparing our leadership team for the future, but it's one of those steps.
Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Yilmour. Would like to compliment Dr. All and staff on this as well. It's, it's something that we've discussed about succession planning, and so this is very positive. I, I can't resist reading this one, one page because it really speaks of board member work, and that's the, the page is called "Action Learning Is: Real People Resolving and Taking Action on Real Problems in Real Time and Learning While Doing So." And the great attraction of action learning is its unique power to simultaneously solve difficult, difficult challenges and develop people or organizations at minimal cost.
We're resource efficient.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. George. Appreciate your leadership in this area. And thank you, Dr. All, for your comments. Our next item is item two point oh three, which is, has to do with human resources, our growing our own initiative. And Dr. Donovan and Dr. Gosi are going to present this item.
Good evening. For the next few minutes, Lowell and I are going to provide you with an update on our human resource initiative of Grow Our Own Program. As you're probably aware, across the nation, school districts are finding a challenge to, a challenge to fill some teaching vacancies in some areas such as special education, math, science, family and consumer science, as well as even kindergarten and upper elementary positions. So to be proactive, about a year ago, our human resource department started exploring some options to try to come up with some new strategies so that we could jump on, jump quickly on obtaining high-quality teachers. Also, with the changing of our student demographics and, as well as changing of student demographics across the nation, it's become important that we look to obtain diversity in our teaching staff to help meet, best meet the needs of the changing demographics of our student The primary purpose of our Olathe Grow Our Own Program would be, of course, to try to increase the diversity in our teaching staff by encouraging qualified individuals to, of diverse backgrounds to apply for the program. We also are looking to increase the number of highly qualified teachers in some of those teacher shortage areas which I just mentioned. And then also to encourage some of our Olathe graduates and our current employees to consider teaching as a career. We have found that every year we, we try to, we pride ourselves in hiring back some of our Olathe grads, and that seems to be successful for both them and, and us. I'm going to give you an, an overview of some of the components of our proposed program. First thing we would need to do would be to select participants, and of course, these participants would apply. They would be interested in areas that we target, those hard-to-fill areas or diversity. They would have to go through an application process as well as a selection process. Some of those components are to be determined. Once we get board approval and move forward with the implementation, we'll have to define and, and finalize those details. But we'll, we've talked about setting criteria, having a rubric that we would use to, to help, to assist with our selection. How it works is we would select participants based on our needs that are determined by those criteria, and set up as a forgivable loan to offset some of their college costs. And of course, the number that we could sponsor is based on the areas we define as needs, the number of applicants we have, as well as available funding. Also, one component we know we'll need to do is to work with those individ, those participants. We'll need to monitor their progress, provide them mentoring and support, just like we do the student teachers that we have every year in the district. Once they complete their college programs and also are able to obtain Kansas teacher, teaching license, and also we would expect them to go through interviews and meet the expectations we currently have in place before we hire new teaching staff. Once they do all that, we would agree to offer them a position in the district, and then it would be that they would, the, they would give back to us a number of years of experience that equates to the, the number of years we financed them through college. We've kind of set a minimum of two years, so if we finance someone for just a year, we would, we would expect them to at least give us the minimum of, of at least two years of experience teaching. When we were exploring this last year in Kansas, there were really just two models in existence, one in Wichita and one in Kansas City, Kansas. So Lowell and I actually visited both districts with our list of questions and had them tell us what their successes were, as well as what they, the challenges they encountered and how they had to work through those. The program that's been in existence the longest is Wichita's program. They started their program in nineteen eighty-nine. They began with twenty individuals, and then their peak was, they had thirty-five participants in the two thousand and four, two thousand and five school year. Now Wichita's funding, most of their funding is through Boeing. Boeing has committed to forty thousand dollars a year for ten years. And then they've also indicated that they have some smaller donations from their Chamber of Commerce, as well as some of their business partnerships, but they have been able to, to fund anywhere from twenty to thirty-five students per year and to keep that ongoing. They currently have, they have a hundred and ten participants that have completed the program. Eighty-four of those are still teaching in the district today. And their, their primary purpose was to increase diversity, but they've opened it up, they opened it up to high school seniors, any Wichita grad, and also employees in the district. And they have four colleges, universities that they used as partnerships. The other model, Kansas City, Kansas, has not been in existence as long, but now their funding is strictly its board. A hundred percent of their board, their, a hundred percent of their funding comes from their Board of Education. And what they do is they target high school seniors, they work through the counselors and staffs at their high schools and their Future Teacher Association. And they, theirs funding is a thousand dollars a year for the entire education program, whether it be a four-year program, and if the students go to a five-year program such as KU, they go ahead and sponsor the fifth year as well. And again, what KCK focuses on, they focus on high school grads or Yonk County residents or some of their employees as well. Our Grow Our Own Program would be governed by Human Resources Department, but we have also, since summer, we've developed and implemented an advisory council. The advisory council, we've, we met once in the summer, we've been, had two or three other meetings since then, we've been having a lot of discussion. They've been providing input and feedback on the development, and if approved, the implementation of the program. And you'll see here a list of our advisory committee members. Two of our board members, Mrs. Wilhelm and Mr. Poland, who's not here this evening, have been active members of our advisory committee. We've tried to include, in addition to HR administrators, we have some of our teachers from the high schools who work with those future teacher organizations, as well as we have representatives from colleges and universities, and then we've had Olathe Schools' Public Foundation represented as well. This time, Lowell's going to talk a little bit about funding options and, and a little bit more about the program.
Thank you. Well, like a lot of things, sounds good on the surface, but what's it going to cost? And so that's what we'll spend a little bit of time talking about this evening. First of all, after looking at some models that we've seen, we wanted to be a little more aggressive in, in goals, and of course, you can always set it and, and back off if you need to, but we're proposing that we would look at a range. And unlike the other two programs that gave a fixed amount per person per year, we would propose that ought, that ought to graduate over time. Someone would come in at a lower level, they'd get a little bit more each year for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's an incentive to stay in the program. Secondly, if someone does get in, decide that they do want to change their mind, change their major, whatever, then they don't have as much to pay back at that point because it would be an agreement they would sign as a forgivable loan if they don't complete the process. That is absolutely our expectation. So it allows them to get in on a little lower end as well. And over time, as we'll show in an example here in a moment, the dollars could work out very similarly to what they would get maybe in a, in a fixed plan. But we propose a range, starting at twelve hundred to about two thousand, with increasing each year. That also gives them their highest amount, the, the two thousand range, as they are student teaching, which, for those that have done that, that's a time you don't really have a lot of hours to do outside employment. So anything additional you can get at that point in time, I'm sure would be very welcomed. The number of awards obviously will depend on the funding that we can secure. We'd like to be optimistic and say that we hope that we can come up with something around five. It may be one, it may be three, but you know, whatever it is that between now and this spring we can come up with, but at the same time, what we have to think about is not just what would be the outlay this year, but what would be the outlay that we could secure for that student for their four years or five years as, as the case may be. So we have to think about that when we're going into it as well, and, and again, depending on what's available, we'd like to target five, and we'll see how that goes. With that, I want to give you a little bit of an example, so what could this look like? And so we've outlined, if a student goes presently to University of Kansas, that's a five-year program. A number of schools of education have four-year programs, and there may be some of our Olathe graduates that are already in college, and they're interested in education, or maybe they're in a major now that if they moved over to the education side to teach what that major is, it might be one of those hard-to-fill areas that we're absolutely looking for, they might be able to get there in two years or three years. So I want to give you three different examples as to what this proposed range might look like. So in the case of, let's say, a five-year student, if, if that were the case, they were choosing presently University of Kansas as a five-year program, then their first year, they'd be at that twelve hundred dollar level. Now our next level, as you can see, the five-year person during their second year would move up a couple hundred dollars, and the four-year person who's going to a four-year program could start at that Level B or that second level at fourteen hundred. Level three, you can see how they would advance. Level four, or D as we put it on here, that might be where a two-year person would come in because they only have two years in their program. Maybe they've got sixty hours, or they already have a degree, and they're just getting the licensure and the student teaching pieces. And then a fifth year, again, added on to all of them. So over time, that person in the five-year program, we would be given the equivalent of eight thousand under this scenario, using these ranges, these examples. A four-year person, sixty-eight hundred, a two-year person, thirty-eight hundred. And just put into some perspective, if we, if we compare what's the outlay now that we're doing just in salary for a beginning teacher, well, roughly, again, planting seeds with that same total amount of money, the five-year program, we could do some incentive for four students for four years. Under the, under the four-year situation, we could do five students with some incentive for, for their four years. And under the two-year program, we could do nine, just with an equivalent amount to what currently we would do in salary for one staff member. Again, I just offer that as a relative basis to see how planting some seeds down the road could bring some return. And obviously, with the four-year and the two-year person, that return happens even As far as sources, Dr. Donovan mentioned a couple different ways that districts have done this. We would like to look at possibly a combination of things. One of those, certainly, we're in a much better situation than either two districts in that we have a very successful Olathe Public Schools Foundation. And so we wanted to involve Jim Smith and, and their executive director, Scott Zurger, on our advisory committee to look at and discuss the possibility of, of what might be there in the way of a partnership. I know Scott's made a, just an overview to their executive board, and we're invited to go speak with him in December to talk about more details, presentation much like this, on what we're looking at, and maybe hopeful that there could be a role that they could play as part of this. At this point, no decisions made as far as that, but we're at least optimistic that maybe this is some other way that we can continue to partner as we have in the past very successfully. Another would be potential corporate community program partners. In visiting both with Scott and with Jim Smith, they've identified that there may in fact be some contacts that they have through work of the foundation and, and school business partnerships, that there may be that donor or two out there that sees this as a particular interest of theirs, and one that they would want to latch on to specifically, maybe as far as their charitable giving. Another we've identified is their own employees, a way to give back, sort of a legacy, a passing the baton, and, and maybe we should look at in partnering with the foundation, an opportunity to do that through payroll. We have that set up now for other charitable giving, such as United Way. Perhaps this is something that we could look like where over a period of time, someone could designate their gift, so much a month, goes strictly there, could be part of a menu that could be for the Grow Our Own Program, or maybe other options that the foundation currently has, other scholarship programs, et cetera. So we did not want to overlook that as an option as well. It is a strategic direction of our Board of Education. We feel like you've charged us with providing quality staff, as well as looking to maybe diversify our staff. And so we feel like at some point, perhaps with the, the coming year's budget, we might look to prioritize this as well. It wasn't in this year's budget because we didn't have a plan presented for you at that time, but looking ahead to the next year, we'd like to entertain that as a possibility. And then finally, we do have an annual budget in, in human resources. It does handle presently our, you know, visiting forty sites and materials, printing up those DVDs and all those things that we've done, and there is some possibility certainly to, to move some of that into initiative like this. We, we don't want to neglect to do what we are currently still doing, but there may be a little shifting that could also take place that way. Selection, again, just quickly, we've identified three targeted groups, as you've heard before. Those high school seniors, we have future teacher organizations now in all four of our high schools, and certainly there may be some emphasis there that we, that we could use. Graduates already in college, once again, we will see a quicker turnaround if we can possibly have some of those apply that are in our focused areas. And then finally, classified employees. That's been the biggest surprise in Kansas City, Kansas, is their number of employees, and they actually call it an employee-to-teacher initiative right now. We have outstanding people that are student, are teaching aides, secretarial assistants, peer educators, that find they really have a knack for maybe working with special needs students, but are really at the time that they were out of high school or, or going through college perhaps, they didn't really consider being a teacher, or maybe some family priorities came along at that time. But now, it may be something that they would like to pursue, and so we'd like to, to look at that group as well. As far as selection, we talked about it would be an applicant process. We would have a rubric to, to score the applications, making sure that it matched what our goals were, a selection committee with that membership to be divided, or to be determined, but certainly divided among our advisory committee members. And there would be a signed letter of commitment, which I know Scott Mason has already looked at, certainly before we bring it to you for any approval. Our board's counsel also would look at that, and we have visited with the counsel of both other districts to learn from their experience. As far as partners, we'd propose to partner with five. You heard that Wichita began with four, right there in their metro area. We'd like to look at five that we have relationships with already. Three of those, as you see the asterisk, have been participating on our advisory committee to help us determine is, do we think this is a doable initiative? But we'd like to extend it to five initially. We've not written a letter, so we don't have a commitment in any of their parts. I can tell you that the three that we've talked with have been extremely excited about the idea, and so we do anticipate that we'd have a good response. But we think by using all five here, it also covers the range of education majors that covers a lot of those hard-to-fill areas that are, some of those aren't available at all of those sites. And then last, what would be our next steps? Well, obviously, we need to continue to work to secure funding. We need to finalize the participant agreement and any other documents that we would use, run those by counsel. And then Mr. Poland wanted to be sure that we included in, in any comments to you, the fact that there's very much an accountability component. We would want to identify what are those goals we're after, what will be our benchmarks along the way, and the data we'll collect, such as number of completers, people who complete and finish their teaching commitment that they agree to, what's the match between the awards we gave and filling those vacancies, and have we in fact assisted with increasing our diversity? With that, we just conclude, as you can see there, the idea is to encourage teachers of tomorrow from certain backgrounds and interests, from our local talent pool today. We're very pleased to have approximately twenty-five teachers per year that come back. Those will be in all areas. This program, however, will be a little more specific to those hardest-to-fill areas and trying to encourage those that we already have with a great deal of diversity in our district to consider teaching as a career. So a little more specific direction than we've had to this point. Now with that, I know Ms. Wilhelm has represented you on our committee, along with Mr. Poland or Dr. All if there are other comments, and would welcome your questions.
Well, that's a great presentation. Thank you. Board members, questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that as we look at being innovative, this clearly is an example of that, as we look to determine- of that, as we look to determine how to attract and retain the best talent. I think this is a great program, so I commend you and support it fully.
Thank you.
I think this is an awesome opportunity, and I very much appreciate you putting this together. I would suggest that we be very proactive in approaching businesses throughout the metropolitan area, not just in Olathe, but throughout the metropolitan area, because I was mentioning to Dr. All, just looking through the Business Journal last week, I saw articles in there about particular businesses who had offered four-year scholarships to students of particular interest, ethnic background, and so forth. And I think, again, our innovation in this category would be very impressive to companies, and I think it would be an opportunity they would be interested in participating in.
Hope so.
Just one quick question, and that is, at the present time, do we have any programs with our juniors and seniors in which we place them in mentoring positions to work with any of our staff? I know we have such quality staff that that's probably the natural mentoring that takes place when they are students in the classrooms with our teachers, but do we have any other programs or opportunities for these students as juniors, seniors, to start to be introduced? I know sometimes as a freshman, you really don't have an idea yet whether you want to specialize in math or science, or some of those hard-to-fill areas. So that would be the question I'd have. Do we have something that we are now doing to kind of lead them in that direction?
We do have a few. We have a science cadet program that's been active for quite some time at Olathe North, and they, students get to go out and actually teach. They teach elementary students, as well as our naturalist program. They have an opportunity to be trained in specifics about a certain animal, where it lives, characteristics. And again, the elementary students come in, and they have a chance to practice and teach. We also have had the Career Pathways Program at our high schools, where a student for, as a trade-off for credit for an hour, possibly two hours in their day, can leave the school site for either sixth period or sixth and seventh period, and go and work at an elementary school, shadowing, and again, getting used to that and seeing what the other side of the desk looks like in terms of preparation and delivery of information. And we've had quite a few students, especially high school students, going to elementary sites, that that's helped them to determine, is this for me or not? And that's been at it for quite some time. I think what has helped with that is our future teacher organizations, now active at all four high schools. They go out and visit places like University of Kansas School of Education, Emporia State School of Education, again, to get more information while students are juniors and seniors, to help steer in that direction. We've done a great job with 21st Century and programs and others, preparing people for all sorts of professions, but we really haven't necessarily tapped in our own profession to the extent that we can, the talent that we feel is there.
You know, my view is that as we go forth and develop this, I know there's, it's a great idea to look for community support. I would just hope that we would not let funding be an impediment to us here, as I think we can overcome that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that presentation. Our next agenda item, 2.04, deals with elementary science clubs, and Dr. Banikowski will be
Appreciate the opportunity to share with you this evening a report that will let you know that science is alive and well in the Olathe District Schools' elementary schools. I think you'll be as excited as I have been about this new initiative that is aligned, of course, with our board's strategic direction on student learning, advancing student learning, and advancing student learning in the area of science. As you can see from the title, we are going to talk to you tonight about CSI Olathe, and it is not on in the evening on the TV program, but it is actually occurring in our elementary schools across this district, cool science investigations. Through collaborative approach, working with professional counsel in our Board of Education, in which you provided stipends for teachers that would be sponsors for our elementary science clubs the first time this school year, as well as the support, of course, from our professional counsel for that. The Kaufman Foundation grant, which we received, a $1.5 million grant, part of that went toward the initiation of the science clubs at our elementary level, both for materials, which are so important with this type of extended learning, you have to get your hands on things to be excited about science. And also our support staff, we were able to hire five instructional resource teachers for both our elementary and our junior high schools that focus particularly on science, out in the schools, out in the classrooms, working side by side with teachers, enhancing our science education. And in addition, we've also had some other partners that have worked with our elementary science programs. Our Olathe North High School Geosciences, and isn't it great to see that connection between high school and elementary school? The Bayer Corporation, Kansas State University Extension, those have been wonderful partners as this process has gotten off the ground. Certainly, this does not happen with leadership. You don't have an initiation of a program that goes from zero to 31, 100% of our elementary schools, in a short period of time without great leadership. Carol Williamson, our K-12 Science Coordinator, provides that type of leadership, and we're very fortunate to have someone of her expertise working with us here in the district. Carol's going to give you a little hint about the implementation of this program.
We started science clubs on October 23rd with participation at all 31 elementary schools and over 700 students participating right now. We are in the process of collecting student participation data, so we can track the participation of students, and especially looking for some of our outcomes and initiatives, both of our strategic plan and of the Kaufman Initiative, and that's to look at underrepresented students in math and science. We have three sessions of the clubs, fall, winter, and spring, and we're well into our fall session with exciting activities happening at those schools. Our focus has been to use research-based practices on extended learning, and the research on extended learning is very clear, that this kind of an opportunity for students to engage in something that's an interest area of them and some time when they have time to explore a science concept, very much supports what they do during the school day in their learning, as well as, we hope, how they set their academic goals for the The topics of the science club, the topics of the science clubs include these seven topics, and schools can choose three of the topics for their three sessions. All 31 schools are enrolled in First LEGO League, and again, very much with the help of the Kaufman Foundation, who helped to support those materials. First LEGO League engages students in building LEGO robotics, where they program the robots with, they build the robots, plan them, program with a computer, run them, see if they can improve them. So it's a design, research and design type of activity that's very engaging. The students also have the opportunity to take this another step, and that's to engage in inner-school competitions that are available in the metro area and in northeast Kansas. The Paleontology Club was designed by the students and teachers of the Geosciences Program at Olathe North, so it's a nice connection of their outreach goal with the Geosciences Program to make that program a destination for learning. And one of the options of the Paleontology Club is that the clubs can choose to go to Olathe North for a field trip for one of their club meetings. Physics with toys is a good place to think about and talk about, boys and girls. All of these clubs are intended for engaging both boys and girls, but toys, the kinds of toys that we're using are ones that we want to be sure that all students have an opportunity to interact with, to develop those spatial skills, and to also to try to explain what they observe. So Physics with Toys is just pure fun with some learning attached. Science Fair Project Club gives schools an opportunity for another way for their students to engage in science fair projects, and that would be in an after-school setting. Many schools engage in science fair projects during the curriculum day, but this gives them another option for science fair projects. And we're using a very interesting and engaging material for this. We're using, for the activity, the activities they do, they use ultraviolet beads, beads that are sensitive to ultraviolet light. The principals, at a principals' meeting recently, found out just how engaging they are, and then they went back to work. Yeah. Science Olympiad is an extended learning that we offer in a competitive, at a competitive level, at the junior high and senior high, and a very rewarding activity for our secondary students. We're pleased to be able to offer that at the elementary level in a non-competitive format, but they also can set up little friendly competitions. One school might call another and say, how about if at our next meeting, they're both participating in Science Olympiad, we get together and see and compare our bridges and have a little friendly competition? Simply Science Technology was designed by the Bayer Corporation in their Making Science Make Sense initiative, and they partnered with KSU Extension, who put together, our local KSU Extension facility put together the materials for these kits. There are seven very large kits of materials that were provided through the budget of KSU Extension, and then we hooked on. So this is a very collaborative club through Bayer, Kaufman, Olathe District Schools, KSU Extension, to provide some great opportunities for students. And Space Camp is a result of a grant that a district teacher applied for and received a few years ago, created a space camp that's just an awesome experience, and this gives us an opportunity to roll it out in a new way. And we want to share with you what's happening out at the schools. This week at Washington, the students are addressing a centuries-old technology question, how do you move water uphill? And these students are building Archimedes screws in order to try to accomplish that. At Tomahawk, these students are mining for gold, it's actually pyrite, mining for gold in an activity called Gold in Vacation, which is a Science Olympiad activity where the students are challenged to mine enough gold to pay for their vacation. And Paleontology Club at Prairie Center, students observing properties of rocks, minerals, and fossils.
As you can see from this picture alone, there are very engaged children, after-school, being engaged by science, touching, feeling, exploring, and observing, and we should be excited about this opportunity for our children. Over 700 children in this district participating, learning science, applying science, and thinking science is pretty cool. We're pleased to share that with you, and I know if any of you are interested in learning more about these or having an opportunity to touch and feel, we'd be glad to set you up. But isn't this a CSI Olathe that's pretty cool, science investigations? Thank you, we'd be glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Dr. Banikowski, are we exceeding 24 students, or at least the demand? Does it exceed that? And what's the limitation that results in a 24?
We designed with the idea of 24 students participating at a time. In schools, we've encouraged schools to be creative to meet the demand that they have. Some schools have chosen to have different students, a different enrollment for each of the three sessions, and that spreads it out to more students. Some schools have just doubled it up, and the school is supporting additional teacher stipends, so that they can meet with the same club on two nights of the week and serve even more students. So we've exceeded 24 students' participation at several of the schools.
Thank you.
Definitely a demand.
I didn't see in here what grade levels participate in science club. Did I miss it?
It's designed for grades four through six, and it's mostly those grades participating more commonly, fifth and sixth grade.
Little competition with math wings, but we're finding kids can be involved in an awful lot when they're interested.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that presentation. This brings us to the time of our comfort break. Board members, let's take 10 minutes. We'll return at 6:45 for our awards and recognitions and awards.